Town Council and the Wintrop School Committee. We're here this evening. We have one agenda item, and that is to appoint a new school committee member. Please call the roll.
Councilor Inghman?
Here.
Councilor Callow. Councilor Christopher?
Yeah.
Councilor Terry?
Yeah.
Councilor Sero?
Here.
Councilor McDuffie?
Here.
Councilor LaConti?
Here.
Vice President Boncory?
President Vecchia?
Here.
Valentino Capobianco?
Here.
Brian Perrin?
Here.
Gus Martucci?
Yes.
Jane Fabiano?
Here.
Jennifer Powell?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Twelve members this evening. That means when we come to actual voting, the individual will have to attain seven votes to secure the position. I would like to proceed in the following manner. There are three individuals that we have on file. Could you read them, please?
Samantha Bracy. Shawna Hodge Barnett. Suzanne Swolp.
These three individuals have applied for this position. I would like to place this in nomination at this time. However, if there's anyone on the floor that would like to make a nomination beside these, we will accept that as well. Are there any nominations from the floor? If not, I place those three individuals in nomination. And at this particular point in time, I will open it up to public comment. Yes, sir.
My name is James Lederman. I've lived in this town for 68 years. I've had the pleasure of meeting Suzanne Swolp. I think she's the most qualified candidate that I've ever seen around your school committee. And let me compliment all the new members of the school committee and the town council. It looks like a great board, but my recommendation is Suzanne Swolp. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
Hi. Good evening to everybody, members of the school committee, the town council, and the community. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Samantha Bracy, and I'm here tonight as a candidate for the open seat on the school committee. I've had the pleasure of meeting with each of the town council and school committee members over the past few weeks, so I just wanted to say thank you for all of your time and support that you put into that. And I just wanted to speak for a couple minutes. My background includes teaching. I have degrees and teaching licenses in elementary and special education. I've also completed pre-doctoral work in reading and literacy instruction with a dissertation focused on inclusion opportunities for students with special education needs. And this background will serve me well in the school committee role as I work to support the district's goals and policies. I am a fourth-generation resident of Wintrop. I now have three kids of my own who will grow up here and go to school here. I myself am a Wintrop High School graduate, and I have experienced firsthand the high-quality foundation of the schools that we have here. In fact, one of the reasons that I'm a teacher today is because of the work that I did with Mr. Donnelly's students and Winarch in the high school. I know that as a member of the school committee, I could use my experience as a teacher in the new public schools, as well as my education and training to support many of the goals the district already has in place and to make sound recommendations regarding budget and policy moving forward. So to close, I would just like to note that we are really fortunate to have three women, highly qualified women, running for this position tonight. And it is my hope that, you know, my experience teaching in Newton and my background make me a strong candidate for this role, and I urge you to consider all of this as you cast your vote tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment? Yes.
Hi, Kathleen Cucuccio, 49 Waldemar Ave. I've spoken to some of you personally and spoke our little ad nauseam at one of the past school committee meetings with regard to my endorsement of Suzanne Swolp. So I'm going to really be brief because a lot of you know where I stand. I would like to echo what Chrissy said. We really are fortunate to have three great candidates that have great qualification for this role. Personally, with Suzanne's resume and, which again, I don't need to rehash it, but from her teaching inside the classroom, from her research, from the writings that she's done, her academic background is phenomenal. She is a definite advocate of public schools and public schooling. She is an absolute advocate of keeping, if we can, in developing programs to keep our special needs students in town. My nephew is actually one of them right now that is out of district with autism because the town just doesn't have the right program for him. Suzanne has grandchildren that are going to school in this community. I think, well, I think one's just old enough right now, but her other grandchild will. Again, I just, no disregard to anyone else, I just feel that her experience and breadth of knowledge across the board in every level of budgeting and supervision and just education, her resume just speaks such volumes. I've had the pleasure of talking with her for a couple of hours over the phone, and I truly believe that she's the right candidate for this job. And that's it. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Camrood Casey. I live down in the point on Maryland Avenue. I've had the pleasure of knowing Samantha since we were in fifth grade. She's an amazing teacher, an amazing parent. Her and her husband Nick have three children under the age of five that continue to put this town first and always are trying to get people involved. Not only is she qualified from her education, but as a humanitarian, she's an amazing person, and she would be the best person for this role. That's all.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, folks. Leah Harttenen. I live Cottage Hill endorsing Shawna Hodge Barnett. I've known her for a few years. She has a master's degree in behavioral analysis, which I have to sometimes remind myself what that means, but essentially autism treatment is founded in behavioral analysis. And knowing what we have all heard about students with special needs leaving Wintrop, needing more services, Shawna can bring that lens. She has experience with budget, with grant writing, with finance. She's been here, you know, since the last go-around, and I think she's a wonderful fit. She has two children that are currently in Wintrop public schools, and I just think she's wonderful, and I hope that you will consider her.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Suzanne Swolp, and I looked at the paper one morning, and I saw that this job was available. And I thought, maybe this is something I could contribute to the community. I've had a lot of educational experience in mentioning some of the things that I've done. But I do feel that when I looked at this, I thought, I've done strategic planning, I've done my negotiations, and I've been in the classroom, and I've served on a couple of boards, and I certainly have given a lot of presentations to boards. So as a member of the Wintrop community, and I've really found this to be a very special place, I wanted to give back, and I thought that this might be a way to do it. So I appreciate your consideration, and thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Yes, please.
Hi, good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Shawna Hodge Barnett. I'm one of the candidates that submitted their name. I've spoken with, I think, the bulk of you either the last round or this round, and I think just sort of to reiterate, and I would like to say, I feel like with the last round, my candidacy became something and an intent that was my intent. My intent was to provide all of you support. Your job's not easy, you know, and you're doing this because you love this town and because you care for all of our much-ones. And I wanted to support that. You know, I wanted to make sure that there was someone here that had the education and the background experience to support you guys in making your decisions. It sort of segued into something else entirely in that, you know, really wasn't my intent. My intent was to take my 20 years of experience and my life that I've sacrificed to my career, and all of a sudden, that wasn't the bulk of all of this. So, you know, I just wanted to reiterate as to why I'm doing this, and it's because every morning I wake up and I have these two beautiful kids that walk into a school district and have amazing teachers like Mrs. Beatty, you know, I have spoken to Mrs. Dykens, such amazing staff who sacrifice every day for our kids. And it's such a hard line that you guys walk because there's so many other elements that come into your job. And 20 years of doing this, I've worked in so many different school districts. I've seen things that work, I've seen things that haven't worked. I'm also an advocate, so a part of that role is being able to negotiate, being able to take both sides of the table and come together to a feasible agreement. I know budget was a really big thing for the last element. I've been doing budgets for 20. I actually just finished work with my company on our proposal for TMH. I have contacts with TMH, Department of Education, DVS. I, you know, I feel that I am a qualified candidate. I have experience, but I also feel equally as blessed to have two other just as phenomenal qualified candidates. And regardless of the outcome, you both have my support. But I did just feel like I needed to clarify that my intent this first round was to support all of you and to bring what knowledge base that I have to the school committee. So thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard in the public? If none, we'll close the public comment portion and open it up to any members of the council, any members of the school committee that'd like to make a statement. Don't all speak at once. With that, we'll go into the voting. Again, there's 12 participants up here. Takes seven votes. As we go through this, the lowest vote getter, if we don't get enough in the first go-around of Senate, the lowest vote getter will be eliminated and will vote to two. So with that, please call the roll.
Councilor Inghman?
Suzanne Swolp.
Councilor Callow?
Suzanne Swolp.
Councilor Christopher?
Suzanne Swolp.
Councilor Terry?
Samantha Bracy.
Councilor Sero?
Samantha Bracy.
Councilor McDuffie?
Suzanne Swolp.
Councilor LaConti?
Samantha Bracy.
Vice President Boncory?
President Vecchia?
Samantha Bracy.
Valentino Capobianco?
Suzanne Swolp.
Brian Perrin?
Suzanne Swolp.
Gus Martucci?
Suzanne Swolp.
Jane Fabiano?
Suzanne Swolp.
Jennifer Powell?
Suzanne Swolp.
Eight, Suzanne Swolp. Four, Samantha Bracy. None, Shawna Hodge Barnett.
Congratulations. We'll be in recess. Good evening, everybody. Call to order, the town meeting, the town council meeting, I should say, February 6, 2018, at the Hoggie Hearing Room. This is being recorded, may be televised live. We've already done the pledge of allegiance, so I'll take the roll call.
Councilor Inghman?
Here.
Councilor Callow?
Yeah.
Councilor Christopher?
Yeah.
Councilor Terry?
Samantha Bracy.
Councilor Sero?
Samantha Bracy.
Councilor McDuffie?
Suzanne Swolp.
Councilor LaConti?
Samantha Bracy.
Vice President Boncory?
President Vecchia?
Samantha Bracy.
Valentino Capobianco?
Suzanne Swolp.
Brian Perrin?
Suzanne Swolp.
Gus Martucci?
Suzanne Swolp.
Jane Fabiano?
Suzanne Swolp.
Jennifer Powell?
Suzanne Swolp.
Seven eight. Eight, Suzanne Swolp. Four, Samantha Bracy. None, Shawna Hodge Barnett.
Congratulations. We'll be in recess. Good evening, everybody. Call to order, the town meeting, the town council meeting, I should say, February 6, 2018, at the Hoggie Hearing Room. This is being recorded, may be televised live. We've already done the pledge of allegiance, so I'll take the roll call.
Councilor Inghman?
Here.
Councilor Callow?
Yeah.
Councilor Christopher?
Yeah.
Councilor Terry?
Here.
Councilor McDuffie?
Here.
Councilor LaConti?
Here.
Vice President Boncory?
President Vecchia?
Present.
Thank you.
The council will go into executive session. The council anticipates going into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation. Discussions of these matters in the open meeting could have a detrimental effect on the process. Matters to be discussed: tax title litigations. Votes can be taken at this meeting. I will call the roll to go into executive session.
Emotion.
A motion.
Someone make a motion.
Someone make a motion.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Councilor Inghman?
Yes.
Councilor Callow?
Yeah.
Councilor Christopher?
Yeah.
Councilor Terry?
Here.
Councilor Sero?
Here.
Councilor McDuffie?
Here.
Councilor LaConti?
Here.
Vice President Boncory?
President Vecchia?
Present.
Thank you.
The council will go into executive session. The council anticipates going into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation. Discussions of these matters in the open meeting could have a detrimental effect on the process. Matters to be discussed: tax title litigations. Votes can be taken at this meeting. I will call the roll to go into executive session.
Emotion.
A motion.
Someone make a motion.
Someone make a motion.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Councilor Inghman?
Yes.
Councilor Callow?
Yeah.
Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Councilor Terry?
Here.
Councilor McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilor LaConti?
Yes.
Vice President Boncory?
President Vecchia?
Yes.
We are in executive session.
Town council will return in open session when we're through. Thank you. Just as a brief comment, why we were in executive session, just kind of top-line it because you're not going to get into why. The council, with the cooperation of the town managers, are in the process of redeveloping guidelines as it pertains to tax liens, tax titles in the town of Wintrop, and that's basically what that was all about. I won't say anything further than that, okay? In litigation. In litigation. Thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes of the January 16, 2018, council meeting.
Motion.
Motion. Do we hear a second? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to notice one correction. It was Stephanie Vecchia, is it Steffi Vecchia? As much as Ron wants more relatives.
Oh, yeah.
So it's with an R.
Well, that's a, that's a no.
That's my only amendment.
Okay, with the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. We have a presentation by the Transportation Committee. Let's see, they're here tonight. It's all yours. You have three months.
We're going to try to make this quick since we're running a little overtime here. Oh, and I have a couple of handouts for you. Let's start. This one on this side. This one on this side. I know our memo was actually in your packet, but we did make a couple of updates, and that's sort of an addendum with some of the announcements that we'll be making. Actually, if there's an extra copy, I should hold on to it.
Actually, this is on the website. It's not really substantial changes. It's just kind of stylized.
Yeah, no, I have the, some things on here today.
Oh, even, okay.
So, thank you for the opportunity to really introduce ourselves. We're the Transportation Committee. We're not all here tonight, but this is our first time we've been able to sit before you as a new council, so I wanted to congratulate you all and tell you how excited we are to work with you this year, to take this opportunity to just do like a very brief snapshot of our work to date, since we're just about a year and a half old as a committee, and also look forward to the next year and have an opportunity to get your feedback, either at tonight's meeting or at a next meeting or via email. But basically, so I'm sorry to introduce myself. Julia Wallers.
I'm Charles Southworth. I'm from Precinct One.
Yep, Precinct Two. And we also have Chris Liello who couldn't be here tonight, and Jerry Bellbo who couldn't be here tonight, and two other members that we're hoping to bring in in the next couple of weeks. Anyway, 2017 was a big year for us. It was our first year. Got off to a really fast start with the bus service, the RFP, to get the new Paul Revere buses, MBTA buses. That happened in June. That was a big success. I'll have some updates or announcements about that afterwards. We were very excited to pass the Complete Streets policy this past April, and we look forward to making that more of a tangible reality for the town. A big focus for us last year was on parking and looking at different management strategies and policies. Was very excited to bring in my old boss, Jason Tribber, for the workshop, and then to conduct a study of the CBD with the parking clerk and some other volunteers. This year, we look forward to hopefully moving that forward into some tangible recommendations. And so I have a section of that in the traffic report. That's a little snapshot of 2017, and I'll hand it over to Charles to talk about what we're looking forward to this year.
All right. So I'm just going to go over the real brief, kind of what we're thinking for 2018 potential priorities, and, you know, as always, we just request your feedback and input on what you're looking for and what we can work together on. Obviously, volunteers, so try to just work with everybody. Anyway, we've been focusing a lot on bus service, so as Julia mentioned, we've been making some progress there. There's some follow-up to do, and the T's been really, really good in working with us and helping to coordinate with the town and everything, so we'll continue some of that. We've been mostly, we kind of realized in discussion amongst ourselves, we've been kind of focused on, you know, parking and buses, and if we're going to uphold like the Complete Streets mandate for the, you know, the policy that we passed and some of the complacency things with regard to getting grant money for Complete Streets, we really needed to also kind of take a little bit of a step back and focus on walking and biking efforts. So we're going to be looking at that in addition to maybe a little bit of parking, kind of a little bit of a pivot towards those other areas, but, you know, continuing obviously a lot of the bus stuff as well. Just realized it was an area that we kind of needed to make sure we were including all of transportation rather than just parking and buses and cars. So to that end, we're going to work a little bit more on the Complete Streets policy, and then also a little bit more on some of the parking management stuff if, you know, if needed, if we're going to be doing any sort of parking management stuff, we'd love to be included in that. So those are kind of our, in short, 2018 priorities. There's probably a little bit more in the details, but those are kind of the big points.
So some proposed new priorities, which is what we wanted to remind you guys tonight. This year, I know that the ferry, you'll hear more about this from Chief Delahanty, Tom and Delahanty, we are at sort of a turning point with that ferry. Are we going to move forward? How are we going to fund it? What is the best way to operate it? I wanted to let you all know that tomorrow night at our meeting, we do have Alice Brown from Boston Harbor now coming to our meeting. We all feel pretty strongly that a regional approach is crucial to making the ferry work and making it an integral part of our transportation system, because Wintrop's ridership alone probably will never support the ferry by ourselves. It's very important to make that part of the region, and I encourage you all to consider what other ideas could be. I'm looking forward to hearing what Alice has to say tomorrow night before we make a decision on whether or not to pull the plug or tie it in with other sources. So I would really love to see more creativity around the ferry before we give up. Something that's going to be big this year that I'm very excited about, and I'm not sure if Joe's ever mentioned this, but Wintrop is looking to get dockless bike share. And this ties into our Complete Streets policy, because if we're going to suddenly have dockless bikes around the town, it will help if we have bike infrastructure to make it safe, not just to get around, but also to park the bikes. I'm not sure if you are familiar with dockless bike share, but it's really sort of a new, I hesitate to say fad, but it's kind of come on via storm in the United States, and so MABC, Wintrop has been part of MABC's RFP to get one, actually, we selected two vendors to serve 16 communities so that we don't just have different bike systems in every single town. I know we saw the OFO bikes this past spring, Lime Bikes, sort of just showing up randomly, not knowing what that was. So we have an opportunity to prepare, knowing that we will hopefully be part of that program, and to implement some accommodations in advance so that people feel safe and so the bikes don't just end up, you know, in the gutter, so that there are designated places to do that. So we look forward to being a part of that. I wanted to expand a little bit on the Complete Streets policy because that's sort of a vague thing. I know it came out of our desire to apply for a grant from Mast dot, which is fantastic. It's been a wildly successful program, the Complete Streets Grant Program, and we were so excited to be a part of it, to have helped draft the prioritization plan, which I hope you all check it out. It's literally a laundry list of everything we could or should do to improve our streets and intersections. Obviously, we can only tackle a few things at a time, but Complete Streets policy is not just about getting money to do those certain things, but really about changing our lens for how we view our streets, our intersections, looking at them as not just roadways to get from one place to another, but as places, as really social incubators, opportunities to improve our public health, to build social capital, to have fun, to increase opportunities for exercise. So looking at it as a way of every time we're going to fix an intersection or improve a street, to do so in a way that accommodates all users. And I hate to use the word users because users is people, people on foot, people on bike, people in transit, and people in cars. So taking that balanced approach, and I would really love to work with you all this year in getting some concrete improvements to some of the very dangerous parts of our streets and intersections. So to that end, you might have heard of Bike Wintrop, that's a new, hopefully soon-to-be nonprofit that's arising here in town, and we'll be working in partnership with them, and that will be another sort of leverage point to improve bike facilities. We really look at our streets as ways to send messages to people through space, even just something like having a sign that's a share-o or a sign bike-friendly community that gives people the idea, oh, maybe I will try biking to the store, maybe I will bike my kid to school. So we'd love to see little simple things like that. Okay, so on to the exciting part, the announcements. I'm very excited to share with you that as of March 12, 2018, our buses will be equipped with Charlie Card readers. So first, we get the new buses, and we got GPS technology, you can put your bike in it, you can track when the bus is coming. Now you will actually be able to be like every other person in the Boston region and tap your Charlie Card and not have to buy a separate pass or pay twice or get into an argument with the bus operator about why they should accept your Charlie Card. You can just go.
Those are fun.
Yeah, you know, it gets old after a while. So that is a huge success for us and for making our transit system more accessible. It's really a barrier. So that's great news, and very grateful to the T for literally having, writing us our own software for these buses. And ASC 2.0 is still coming, the Automated Fair Collection. In a couple of years, our buses will be the first to pilot that. But in the meantime, at least, you know, we'll be like everyone else, so very excited about that. We, since we have the new buses, we also have automated passenger counts, meaning they actually can track how many people are riding our buses and at what stops. And I haven't done a full analysis, but the numbers we have now from the fall is about 27 to 2800 people per day ride our buses. That doesn't sound like a lot, but for a population of 18,000 in which only about 10,000 are actually part of the workforce, that's pretty good. And that's on a bus service that to date hasn't been great, and so I really want to just emphasize the demand for transit in this town and the capacity, the opportunity we have to increase it by making our service better, which leads me to my next point, which is bus signs. So we're really just starting at the bottom here, low-hanging fruit. I also got notification that all of our bus stops, which we catalog, will be marked, will be properly marked. A bunch of them were actually removed because they didn't really exist, but the ones that are real stops that the buses actually announce will have, actually, they'll all have new signs that actually say what route it's going to be, or the ones that don't have signs will have them. What was, what was, I'm missing one other part.
Our announcements analyzing the stops that we're doing.
You guys have my announcements. the opportunity we have to increase it by making our service better, which leads me to my next point, which is bus signs. So we're really just starting at the bottom here, low hanging fruit. I also got notification that all of our bus stops, which we catalog, will be marked, will be properly marked. A bunch of them were actually removed because they didn't really exist. But the ones that are real stops that the buses actually announce will have, actually they'll all have new signs that actually say what route it's going to be. Or the ones that don't have signs will have them. What was, what was, I'm missing one other part.
Our announcements analyzing the stops we're doing.
You guys have my announcements. There's one more thing from the T. Oh, the bus network redesign. The T is looking at restructuring all of its bus routes and storage systems in the region, and that's happening this spring. So that's a great opportunity for us to really look at. It's called the Bus Service Plan. Reexamine our routes, which haven't been changed in 30 years, and see how we can better serve the center, sort of key business areas, rather than having a circulator to have sort of the hub and spoke system, which is what our master plan suggested. And that will be a great way to increase access to the center, make it easier for people to live in the center without having to drive every day or even own a car at all. So that combined with Complete Streets, bike infrastructure, better walking facilities, really sets us up for successful development, which we need for our tax base. And that's what we see ourselves here to help you do. And we really want to know what your priorities are because we're an appointed committee, advisory committee, and it's important to know us to know what's important to you. So if you have anything you want to share with us now or via email, we could send a survey, we are all ears. That's my update.
Counselors, questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for all your work on the, on the Charlie Cards. It predates my time on the council, but it has been a problem since I was a little boy. And I really, that is like one of the most impactful things that I think has happened in the past year for sure. So thank you in your committee for all your work.
Thank you. Thanks for being an ally on that. Yeah, I've been blown away by the amount of people that have contacted us saying how it's affected their children, people who are committing to school, and just that it really has been an issue that just hasn't really had a voice. And so now that it's being addressed, people have come out of the woodwork to say how it's affected them, and this is really going to improve. People's quality of life, the experience of living and getting around in Winthrop. And it's our hope we can publicize this, and it will encourage people to try the bus. And hopefully we can increase the frequencies and make the routes even better and have the signs marked. So if you're new, you know, not everyone's going to ask their neighbor, just know that that's a stop where the people are, looks like they're sort of loitering, it'll be a legitimate bus stop. You know, maybe we'll even have a bench or a receptacle or a cover. So that's the direction that we're going in, very excited about that.
Very good. Yes.
I just also wanted to acknowledge all of your energy and hard work over the course of this last year and getting so much done that for so long we would ask the question, why is it this way? And then we just, it was never addressed. But you've, you've come through and all those friends from Austin-Brighton who would say that they wouldn't come visit because their T pass wouldn't work. Maybe they're just fair weather friends.
It's because they're kind of like the gray zone of MTA map. You're like, we're light up in color now. It's a big deal.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say thank you again. I'm really impressed with the work that all of you guys have done over the last year or so. You're essentially our subject matter experts on transportation that the council relies on to help kind of make change positively for Winthrop residents. And I'm wondering along with that, what can we do as a council to help empower you to kind of keep making some of these, these great improvements?
Just keep saying yes. Yeah, no, I mean, I think that you, I'm very much, we're looking forward to you guys being supportive of us. And there's going to be some things that are, that are dicey. The parking issue is a challenging one, and that's one that's going to keep coming up. And we hope that you continue to be supportive of trying new things, piloting. I would think it'd be great to do some pilots here. I know you got a bad name with the pilot and Hagman Road, but pilots can be great. Let's try things, call them a demonstration project. See how we can make changes in quality of life by changing our urban space. And that's, that's exciting. So thanks for asking how you can be supportive.
Yes.
I just also wanted to echo that and say thank you to the Transportation Committee. You guys have accomplished so much in the last two years. And I think that.
One and a half.
One and a half years, pardon me. And transportation is such an integral part to every single thing we're trying to do in town is that we need to have the transportation functioning properly. And so I'm just really, really thankful to have your expertise on board.
Well, there's one thing that I left out. Terry will cover this a little bit, but we actually also got a project in for the capital funding, the TIP program for Revere Street, actually something that's been on the books for a long time that got put off for various reasons, and you'll hear more from Terry. But I'm very excited about the opportunity to do roadway improvements from Crest Ave to Magoon Square. I'm sorry, that's my whole thing. McGee Corner. And some of those are Complete Streets driven, but because that corridor is a feeder to the school, which is something that we always have on our list as a priority, safer to school, making it easier for kids to get to school on foot and to alleviate that congestion problem in the loop. But improving Revere Street doesn't just improve the experience for commuters and for businesses, but for children that are trying to walk to school or parents who might walk their kids to school, but don't because it's simply very unpleasant. And it's very degraded, and there's no shade cover or buffer between the, between the traffic. So little things like that can go a long way. So I hope that there is going to be some investment on our end, but that you'll see the return on investment in roadway improvements that make walking safer for everybody, especially people, children and people in wheelchairs. We do get some comments sometimes, oh, I can't cross the street, wheelchair has to be in the, in the street. How we, how can we prioritize that? It's by taking a Complete Streets approach. So I hope that you and the council can sort of make Complete Streets like the blanket approach for all transportation improvements because then that's the, you kind of go to the lowest common denominator. It works for everybody, and everybody has options and can be safe. Maybe we can do a Complete Streets like 101 or presentation or something, since I know it's a little bit of a wonky term.
Very good. Any further comments, questions? Thank you very much for your service and your hard work to both the, the whole committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Next item on the menu, on the menu, I should say. Is the all exciting public hearing. And this is a public hearing that I'm kind of called to order at this time. Tell council to transfer $75,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the General Fund for DPW's plow troopers. Comments, questions from the counselors? None. I'll open it to public comment. Any questions from the public? Terry, would you like to do a poll with you?
Just a comment, certainly we had six trucks that went down on the DPW that were assaulted in, in plow trucks. This replaces one of those six. Unfortunately, the last storm, the one truck we did get back on the road, dropped a drive drain, drive shaft in the middle of the storm and is now back off the road. So although we tried to repair and replace and put trucks back together and put them on the road, that method is not working. These trucks are 15 to 22 years old in some cases, and we need to start making an investment, a strong investment in the DPW aging fleet. And we hope to roll out a plan through capital improvements and through the budget process that would start replacing it more frequently so we don't have to scurry every time a truck goes down.
Very good. Terry, well said.
It's what we're asking for as a midsize dump. It's probably the most versatile truck, you know, for the day to days as well as the snow and plowing. Allows us to put a small salter inserted. As Terry alluded to, we also are in need of a larger dump, which hopefully we can find a way to fund that. But it's certainly a step in the right direction. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Any further comments?
The Finance Committee recommended this motion unanimously.
Okay, we'll take that up in later in the business. At this time, I'll close out this session. And we'll go to public comment. Yes.
Hello, Stephanie Rock here, Precinct 6. I'm here again this evening from One Winthrop, which is a community-driven initiative to support diversity and inclusion in Winthrop. I want to say thank you for hearing my brief comment in our last meeting. And I'm so pleased that the Diversity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Committee is up for consideration this evening, and I'd urge for that to go forward. Like, very similar to talking about the transportation issues earlier, I feel that so many issues around diversity and inclusion in Winthrop are on people's minds and have not yet been addressed. And it's something that we are looking to do in partnership with a government-type committee. A couple of events that One Winthrop has coming up. On February 21st, we have partnered with the library. We are beginning a book club called You, Me, and Them. Our first book club will be at 6:00 PM on the 21st. The book is The Book of Unknown Americans by Christina Hreks. And anyone is welcome to join that. And then on February 22nd, at the library at 6:00 PM, we have a presentation on DACA, which is Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, which is a very timely topic that is on the mind of many people. So I would encourage the Diversity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Committee to move forward, and One Winthrop will be happy to partner with that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Elliot Ross at Worth, Precinct 1. And I'm also in favor of a Diversity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Committee. I recently heard of several acts of discrimination in Winthrop and feel that a committee like this would help promote inclusion and help create a safer Winthrop for all of our residents. So thank you for your consideration and of this committee, and I hope to see it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jeanne Coughlin, Precinct 5. I just want to say a few words tonight to thanks to Peter and Terry for a really good Precinct 5 meeting that Ron attended. And it was really well represented with a lot of neighbors and concerned citizens. So it was a good meeting, and it was about the heights of the buildings next to residences. So just want to be clear, I was a little bit confused when we talked about tearing up. But I just want to make sure that the zoning law is that it is not four stories, but two and a half stories of 35 feet next to a residence. And so I know that there'll be more changes needed to the center business district zoning, but I just wanted to see if we could clarify that. So I do want to thank Terry, the Town Manager, Peter, of course, Christopher, the former members of the council who listened to us over and over and over for months, and the new members, you know, welcome to you all and thank you for being so receptive and to listen to our concerns. Michael, really instrumental. So I just want to say thank you and to lots of people, and I want to say hundreds of people that supported us either silently or with us, but you know, we all share the same concern. Especially those of us that live right next to the properties that are looking to be developed, didn't know it'll happen, but want to have it in the past. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk about the traffic on Bowden and Oceanville Street. We've got a brand new high school. It's going to be the worst intersection on Winthrop, maybe the North Shore. Bowden and Oceanville. You've got a hill coming down to the high school, the golf course, the stadium, the cemetery, and Little League. They're coming down from Winthrop Street, from the Town Hall, the Library, and St. John's Church. Nobody, it's a four-way stop on Oceanville and Bowden. Nobody stops, nobody. The fence at 62 Bowden Street has been hit at least four times. Bicycles are a big problem. The kids don't, they go right through there on the bicycles. Before the high school was built, that whole neighborhood was concerned about traffic. I signed a letter with Nancy Williams because she had the senior center for the older people in our neighborhood with children. Every town I've been to in the North Shore has a blinker, 20 miles an hour, school zone. I don't see any signs, school zone. There's other towns painted on the hardtop, stop ahead. I don't see any of those. Nobody stops. I talked to Public Works, I talked to the School Committee, the Town Hall, the police. Nothing was done. We used to have a blinker, a red blinker on that corner. Something happened to the electricity on Crosby's Bowl. Nobody knows how to fix that blinker. A four-way stop, no blinker, no school signs, someone's going to die.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, Karen Chavez, Precinct 2. I'm asking the council to support the position of a full-time council clerk. When the council was elected 12 years ago, a part-time position was established. The responsibilities have increased by at least 100%. I also believe by changing the job description and making it a non-uni position, it will benefit the council and ensure confidentiality. My next issue, the dog pack. I don't know what's happened to it, but almost on a daily basis, if you go by Eagleside Park between 8:30 and 9:00, there's at least four or five dog owners letting their dogs run loose. I don't know why, but this is very unacceptable. My last issue, ongoing, the ferry. I've asked the council to have a discussion on the ferry for the last three months. Now we're going on to another season, no discussion, and an operation that loses money every year. For FY16, they've got $50,000 to start with. On June 7th of 2016, the council voted another $125,000 to be added to the Ferry Enterprise Fund for the balance of FY16. The Town Manager then asked the council to appropriate $300,000 to assist the ferry operation. FY17, from the General Fund, $100,000. FY18, from the General Fund, $100,000. Question 19, another hundred. Excluding FY19, General Fund has now contributed $375,000 to the ferry. I believe the time has come to look and decide whether to go on or cut our losses and retire. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, I have a handout if I could approach.
Sure.
Actually, two handouts. And I'd like to have them submitted and put in the minutes of this meeting. I'll also give a handout to people in the audience. The first handout I want to discuss is the Planning Board. I've been to four or five Planning Board meetings. And, excuse me, my name is Jack Dowd, with the President, excuse me. I've been to four or five Planning Board meetings. As you can see with this handout, there are no minutes to the meeting. Took that off the website this morning. The Planning Board has been discussing changing zoning at the middle school Eagleside Park area to Center Business District. So far at the meetings, I've asked for parts of Eagleside Park are going to be entered, for them to be recommended to you, the council, to change to Center Business District. I couldn't get an answer. They have not submitted any maps at the meeting. They have not submitted any recent bounds so that people can understand. And I know people can understand it anyways because there's no minutes to the meeting. Very unfortunate for the town to have a board that's in charge of so much property, changing of the town, to not have minutes. With that, I think they're making a recommendation to you tonight to put 141151 Pauline Street in the Center Business District. I would ask you to not consider that recommendation because there's much more to talk about. The reason there's much more to be talked about is the other handout that I was looking at was Article 97, Disposition of Public Land. I believe it was written in 1978, I'm not positive, the print group might need to read. But it's available online. I have a handout with you, I suggest that you read. And then there's another, there's another thing online from Boston callers that is more extensive in explaining Article 97, Disposition of Land. It's a process to go through. I believe we used the process to change the Ford Banks' public land to a different use. And we did go through that process. I'd like to go through the steps, same process with the land at 141151 Pauline Street. I tried to bring that discussion to the Planning Board, and they told me that was not their issue. Article 97 was not their issue. I couldn't understand them telling me it was not their issue when you have to have a plan before you can change the use to whatever other use an open and transparent meeting would lend to. So I'm asking you not to accept the recommendation by the Planning Board. There's only a small group of people in this town that know about this recommendation because they have no minutes. I'd like everybody in the town to understand that in, I believe, 1902, that there were four women that donated 10 acres, inclusive of Dr. Ingo's wife. 10 acres of property to be used as public land. And that 10 acres with another three acres that the town owned along Pauline Street made 13 acres of land that was to be used. I've researched it, you can look it up. 13 acres of land to be used as public land, open space. I asked a couple of committees, after their designs were presented, how much land out of that 13 acres is left after their proposals, build outs, or whatever are left? Couldn't get an answer. I'd like, I'd like that to be discussed in the Article 97, Disposition of Land. An open and transparent process, which many other towns use. If you do your research, you'll see that Winthrop has gone along these last six months or year and their decisions are vastly different than other cities and towns. Other cities and towns go through a long process of changing public land. The reason they go through a long process is so somebody can't come along and build a hot dog stand on private land or residence or anything else. You have to go through the process. I hope you consider my request, and I thank you for your time.
Act of the Dead. Anyone else? Public comment?
Yeah, just Julie Walters just wanted to throw in that ring for the Diversity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Committee. One Winthrop has seen great momentum and started a really excellent conversation around what it is to be a diverse committee, to celebrate that, to be welcoming, and to see that embraced by the municipal government, I think, would really take Winthrop to the next level and send a great message to the entire region as well as to our own residents about the kind of community that, that we are. And I think that we all believe that we are. But to sort of put that stamp of municipal approval would be enormous. And I hope that you all pursue that recommendation for that committee.
Thank you. Yes.
I got a short one. Just wanted to make sure it's on the public record since it's part of comment. I'd like to follow up with both the gentleman about the intersection and the man about the ferry, just to get some of the details so we can see if we can work the management of our transportation planning itself. Just wanted to make sure we get that on. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening. My name's Rachel Baxter. I'm from the United Kingdom. I recently moved to Winthrop in October of last year. And what prompted me to choose Winthrop has to do with the way Winthrop is structured. I was very impressed with the small community and how people interact with each other. Also went to California when I was young. I went to school in San Francisco Bay Area, and I live in Piedmont next to former Secretary of State Mark Malaro, who is of late now. So when I moved to, and Clint Eastwood was born next street from White Street in Piedmont, California. So when I moved to Winthrop, it reminded me of Piedmont, and I quickly fell in love with Winthrop. I said, oh, this is just like. I said, oh, this is just like Piedmont. I never thought I would be in a small town, a city within a city, or a town within a city, like it wasn't California. So I persuaded my husband and we bought property here in Windrup. My boys are attending school here as well, so I'm going back and forth, UK and here. So I was recently approached by one Windrup. And then, like anyone, when you move to a new community, first of all, you assess the environment, you assess how people interact with each other. And as much as I'm colorblind, I might say, I was just intrigued by the fact that when I looked, I said, hmm, what is the population makeup of Windrup? So I Googled that, and eighteen thousand. I said, well, what is the diversity, you know, the ethnic diversity? I'm not expecting it to be of significant number. However, I was quite taken aback with the structure. But then, I looked at the community, I said, well, whatever they're doing, they're doing a marvelous job to keep the community the way it is because people say a lot of positive things about Windrup, and that wouldn't have been possible if it wasn't for each one of you, the contribution all of you make to make, uh, put to make Windrup the way you make. Having said that, when I was approached by one Windrup, I felt I should be a part of that to see how we all can contribute to diversity and our social inclusion, if you will, for everybody in Windrup. I could say from here to tomorrow, but I'm just gonna make it short as a, as a, as a shout out. Thanks again for being with the audience. That's all I have to say. Many thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Mr. Murray, precinct six. Congratulations to all the councilors. Some may recognize me from some of the meetings before. All the problems or concerns that we had over the last year is something they think that anyone's concerned about in the neighborhood here. It's transparency. What are you guys doing? When are you doing it? How is it being done? Is the community informed? Along those lines, I'd like to congratulate the acting town manager, who has been a one-hundred-and-eighty-degree change from the one we had before. Cutting on that, what the young lady said down there, the ferry. Another thing that people love, how the transportation, that's great. Let's get it out on the floor. What does it cost? Not hiding in budgets and underneath and just tell us what it costs. We'll support it or we won't, but I think there's a lot of ways that the government itself can be more transparent. The project down the center, I don't know, I've heard it's ballooned up to twelve million dollars now because of some misman, not mismanagement, but misestimates of what things were gonna cost. That could be wrong. You guys will be able to figure that out, I'm sure. But that's something that should get out. You should get out in front of these things. They shouldn't come from behind. That's where the anger and the concern comes from, when it comes from behind. And I feel that if you find out something like that, if you're off more leading edge, it would be better for everyone to understand it. Because when people find out afterwards, they think, what are they trying to hide? Why aren't they telling us? Versus, hey, we just missed this, and it's gonna cost X, and the ferry is gonna cost Y. But we think it's worthwhile, and this is why, let it sit in the markets, or any other project that we do. But I think, a lot of you are new, a lot of you, you know, we're moving in the right direction, but I would urge transparency. It's been a big word lately around the federal government and local governments. If you find out something, get ahead of it. Don't be behind it. Because then it just means, for a lot of people, that you're, what are you hiding? Why aren't you telling us it's ballooned up? Why aren't you telling us the ferry costs three hundred thousand a year, or? If it's fifty, it's fifty. It's three hundred is fair. Can it make it on its own? No. To support it, yes. And the people, if you inform us, I just think that we'll make an informed decision and we'll support you in what you do. But if we have to figure things out and try and figure out why you're not telling us, it doesn't breed a lot of trust, and that's when things can get contentious. So I would just urge, you're all new, a lot of you, you're on the right path, but keep that in mind. Stay ahead of these things. Don't, don't let them get you from behind.
Any further comment? Okay. Correspondents, we have none. Committee reports, appointments, commissions, and on committees.
So the committee on committees met today at five-thirty.
They're making that.
We met today in regards to, referred to us as a full-time council clerk position. As we heard very graciously from Mr. Murray just beforehand, our goal behind having a full-time council clerk to work with all the committees is to have someone to be the point person for all these different minutes and getting things up online in timely fashion. So we decided to take that up in committee, and we voted favorably with the job description that was handed to us to establish a full-time council clerk.
Thank you.
So the finance committee held our subcommittee meeting in the council chambers. President, our councilor, Latieri, LaConti, Lacerdo, Engman, McDuffie, council president McDuffie, uh, gave the promotion. Beck, yeah. Uh, myself, as well as Michael Perez and Joe Demolowitz. The committee's gonna make two motions tonight. One is the transfer of seventy-five thousand dollars from the capital stabilization fund to fund a special article for the, for a new plow truck for the DPW. That motion was passed unanimously. The second motion is a motion to transfer from the town, the town council reserves six thousand dollars to the town manager's budget to fund the sanitizing of the council and aging building. We also had a discussion about what some improvements could be to our application process for motions for funding as well.
Thank you, councilor. And we will take up those motions under our own business. You can also continue with the neighborhood precinct five meeting.
Sure. We had our precinct five meeting at the E.B. Newton this weekend, a couple of weeks ago, on the twenty-fourth of January. Councilor Lacerdo and council president Beckia were present. We had a discussion about the analysis that has been done at town hall regarding the CBD. Many people were able to interact and ask questions about what was going on down there and what the investigations, for lack of a better word, had found. We got a lot of good feedback about what was, um, from people who had attended the meeting. I think that we've kind of moved from the beginning of the conversation, and now we're kind of in the midst of it. And I think that that's a good first step, and we're going to be, and that's gonna be very helpful moving forward. We also got, I got some interest in people becoming more involved in shaping decisions that we're gonna be making in the next, in the coming months. And I just wanted to thank all the staff at town hall. And I know I speak on behalf of the whole neighborhood when I say, thank you for all the work that you've done in gathering all this information. I know it wasn't easy work, and I've read over the briefs that I'm sure you're gonna present tonight. And I think it will be very helpful to all the entire community. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Christopher. Town manager's report.
We got a lot to cover. I think some people in this room stole my report from my desk this afternoon, to be honest with you. So, uh, you know, or later on, you'll see, I, there's a motion here for Traffic Safety Advisory Committee on some ordinance changes. We're asking that to be sent out to rules and ordinance for their review. A lot of it's to catch up with the registry mailing out stickers, registration stickers, so they don't, you know, there's a thirty-day lapse usually in those mailings. So they give some leeway there on those mailings. And there's some time restrictions that they, they like a little bit lenient, leniency on instead of strict enforcement on. But, you know, speaking of TSAC and transportation, you know, I asked the former council president Driscoll to actually consider, you know, drafting what goes to CSAC, what goes to transportation. Traffic Safety is, is a committee that's organized and through the manager's office that has operational-level employees that deal with the enforcement changing of the street directions, stop signs, and that nature. And it just becomes clearer and clearer that we need to have defined roles for each committee so there's no overlap. And if the council's decision is to go to one committee and combine the committees, then that should be, you know, the option of the council. I'm not saying one way is right or wrong, but we just don't want redundancy. We want to streamline the process so that it's not going to one committee, then going to another committee, and then coming to the council. The goal of rules and ordinance, it's just a longer process. So I'd ask you to think about that. There's a motion tonight, speaking of the center business infrastructure project, to authorize a borrowing of four-point-nine million dollars from the state SRF grant. That will exceed my borrowing limits that was authorized in August by the former council by about a million dollars. Has the, the price of the project been inflated or gone up? I would say no. If you read the July report that we did and it's online and published online, it specifically states that at that time, the project was eight-point-five million dollars. But the project did not count for certain administration costs, engineering costs, and police details. So, you know, those figures were not included in that eight-point-five. The half a million dollars it would cost to put utilities underground was not included in that eight-point-five million dollars. I think the engineers and Director Calla, who's sitting behind me, correct me if I'm wrong, has always said this was between a ten and twelve million dollar project. So I, I think the consistency from the operational-level employees have been the same. The messaging might have been confusing coming out of the town hall. So we, we are anticipating and cleaning that up, making everyone understand what the actual true cost is, and we don't want to say what the true cost is because that's still being evaluated. The town council president has authorized me to bring in a third-party auditor to Kingston to look at this very issue and how we're gonna pay for this, and who's gonna pay for it, and what a council is gonna come out of. What's water and soil, and what's general fund obligations? Have that complete analysis done. He's back in tomorrow, so I'm hoping by the next meeting, we have this analysis done. And if it is what's going on with soil, what's the, what's that mean for the, the water and soil? So there would be a full, transparent process. There hasn't been any movement on certain aspects of this project because we're in the phases of preparing this for, for a full bid. And until we have the full bid back, we're not gonna have much more information. We'll have the financial down as we progress along. But as, as we discussed last week, on operational level is, well, have we done soil testing? Have we done drill holes in the areas so that we're consistently seeing underground leakage before in our projects? Because that will skyrocket the price. So before we put this up the bid, we want to know what's underneath, so we.
This is like former areas, my gas stations.
Gas stations, yeah. They call them less cases, leak underground storage tanks, and what has seeped into the ground, and where did it come from, and can we trace it back? So we have to examine those areas that have been frequent problems. Potom and Pauline is one frequent problem. When we did that contract two, three, was it? Contract two, we ran into contaminated soil. So before we put a price tag on this, we want to explore and know what we're talking about before coming out with a final price cost for the council and for the public. So we are still working this project. This loan authorization for the SRF grant has to be filed on the fourteenth. We can file it and proceed with you people, when the council referring this to finance. And then we have to have public hearings on it. It is over the twenty-five thousand dollar limit. And we can go through that full process and really understand what you're allowing me to borrow. But it's not four-point-nine in addition to the three-point-nine that was authorized. It is a million dollars more than the three-point-nine.
Right. So you're not asking for an additional, you're, you're upping it a million.
A million dollars on this, on this borrowing. That's correct. And, you know, we did have a public process on the other borrowings, MWRA, that has already been authorized. We signed the contracts with the MWRA today on those borrowings. And that did go through the same public process, the advertisement, you know, everything else. So all, all the rules have been followed on that. We talked about the DBW motion. Forty-five Hillside has been completely rehabbed under the Problem Property Task Force. We are actually seeing the money come in from that property, from the citations written, and also from, from the tax liens. So that's very positive. The dog parks was brought up earlier tonight. The DCR has issued a response to me in the town manager's office that they are not this time, not interested in engaging with the town to develop a dog park on the river once they're blind. They cite that the opposition within the side of the community was concerned to them, and therefore this time would not proceed with an agreement with us. So we'll be reaching out to the dog park committee and reevaluating the other areas that were on their list and coming back to the council for further consideration. The MEMA status is we did file all our paperwork for MEMA. We're waiting for a declaration or lack thereof, whoever they decide they, they, which procedure they're gonna move in. The capital improvements plan, we are working on, trying to get a more thorough capital improvements plan. I know Councilor Engman is the chair of that committee. So we want to actually put a book together that shows the capital plans, the pitches, and everything, and then we can grade them, and then send them to the committee to be evaluated. And then, of course, during that committee evaluation, we'd need to find funding sources for our capital improvements plan, and whether that means the, you know, capital reserves or a portion thereof, or making some of it, a portion of the budget, and a portion of the cap, of free cash in the future. But that's, you know, the committee level will have those full discussions on a capital improvements plan. We talked about Dick Kingston and coming in already. He'll also take a look at the budget that's being drafted by myself and Michael Perez before it gets to council, so he's doing the work on behalf of the council and your eyes on the budget as we move forward. Upcoming ferry season is something that has been a hot topic here tonight, and I think continues to be a hot topic in the community. I think a lot of people do like and enjoy the ferry, and having the ferry, and, and having the ferry service in Windrup. I don't think a lot of people enjoy paying for it. So, you know, where's the balance, and what can we do? And I think we had some conversations with DOT, and they've asked, myself and Mr. Funi, met with them last week, and they asked for more, more details about what are they mitigating, and what's our ask from them, but we have nothing on the table as of we speak tonight of a guarantee from the state, the city of Quincy, or any other organization that we're in conversation with prior to this. Certainly I've asked, you know, for some advice from different private vendors and companies to take a look and see if they were interested in taking over the ferry service. And, you know, I did receive a response from them, your loss would be my loss. And, you know, so therefore it was a little disappointing because I think we do pack the ferry on pleasure cruises, and we don't pack it on transportation cruises. But putting a Charlie card box on the ferry and evaluating that and seeing the numbers go up, even if we have to bring down the prices of the ferry to a Charlie card price, you know, that's, you know, something we should consider. And if we put more people on it, can we reduce the fare and see the volume go up? And do our business on volume and only hit peak time? We're not an Uber service. We have to get out of the mentality of being an Uber service. We have to go where the volume is. So we can't put two people on the ferry at six o'clock in the morning and say, we're gonna have a six o'clock run in the morning because it's just costing me too much money on personnel, fuel, and of course, the insurance is gonna be there anyway, but personnel and fuel. So we gotta look at what really is working on the ferry and what's not working on the ferry if the council chooses to move forward. This is gonna cost money. There hasn't been a municipality yet that has run a ferry in the black without contributing in general fund sources. That's just the reality of, of the ferry services. You know, do we, you know, are we hoping that empty mass dock takes over and does a regional ferry service and includes Windrup and East Boston? You know, if we, if we had that aspect of East Boston that we could stop, makes a lot more sense than Quincy. But right now, we don't have that aspect. So do we, you know, get with the mayor when we're here and advertise out of all the people in Beachfront and try to drag some of the riders over? We do have free parking. So if you do a Charlie card and you're doing a parking fee, you're, you're five-fifty again, you know, you're at five-fifty to ride the train into Boston, right? So we, we need to work hard with our regional partners if the council chooses for me to continue to explore this. I cannot say that we'll be in the black. I cannot guarantee we'll be in the black. My analysis is posted online. I think one gentleman brought it up earlier. We did a complete analysis of this ferry. We were already transparent about it. It's on the website, on the projects, plans, and presentations. Anyone can read it. I think the total loss to date is about four hundred thousand dollars. I think the total loss to date is about $400,000. You know, so me and Ms. Chavez are very close, but there's costs that are not assessed to the ferry that we assume on a daily basis. The directors of the ferry position is slid under the assistant to the town manager. Majority of our time is IT in the ferry. So that we need to get honest with the charging of where those funds are coming from. And so I would urge the council is to give me some direction on where, you know, if there's the appetite to continue the service or not. There's a lot of effort that goes into planning. We have to be running in April if we're going to make a run at this again. But I just think it's unfair if we don't know the direction to waste valuable resources and then say, oh, no, in May, we're not going to run the ferry. So any insight, and I'll continue what my report if you want, or if you want a discussion on this now.
I just think, you know, there's so many opportunities that I feel the town has never taken advantage of to make it a success. And, you know, I use that story about someone getting on a ferry in Boston and coming over to Winthrop. We finally had a sign put up on the landing, but there was not even a sign there. So when people come over to Winthrop, what do you do? Where do you go? And, you know, I've always said there should be some type of a partnership with private enterprise, whether it's the Chamber, whether it's businesses in Winthrop, to give them a reason to want to come over to Winthrop. I mean, we need to market Winthrop. You know, we want people to come over. What do you want to come to? Well, there's the beach. There's, they can go hiking down Deer Island. They can go around to one of our wonderful restaurants. They can go to the Dean Winthrop House. We should, and I think we talked about this, provide some type of transportation, whether it's a trolley or a small van or whatever. So when people get off the ferry, they can see, oh, you want to go to a restaurant? There's a special at one of the restaurants down the center or whatever, up in the Highlands. I believe that we should look at it a little differently and maybe try to get some type of marketing established so that we can market Winthrop. We have so many assets here in the town that a lot of people like to see. Many people that you see walking the beach or walking even in the neighborhood, because I live up in the Highlands, these people are from foreign countries, but they're staying at the Army, so they're staying at a hotel on Sherwood Street. And a lot of those people, when they come to the United States, they'd rather stay in a little community than stay in downtown. So there's so much that we can do. And I hope that maybe we can put something together, maybe in some type of a small committee of the council. And let's focus on trying to save the ferry, a last-ditch effort before we just throw it out. I think it has a lot, I think it has a tremendous amount of potential for the community. And by the way, people are going to be, very shortly, the next six months or so, there's a new place that's opening up in Everett. It's called Wind Properties. Now, if you want to drive to Wind Properties from Winthrop, if you're going to drive, you probably don't want to drive because of the traffic. You could take a bus, but what about a ferry? I see the potential of a ferry service, not only from Winthrop, but the neighboring communities that have access to the water, as a huge, huge opportunity. So I would like to see us get in on the ground level of a discussion. And we just heard that our senator is now chairman of the Transportation Committee. I mean, I think we should use all of these tools and some of these ideas and try to make this thing work before we just throw it down the street.
Yeah, I think, you know, Ms. Funi has offered a public forum, and I think Transportation has mentioned that they would have a public forum on this. So if it's a desire of the council to explore this one last year, then I think having public forums is certainly a way that we should start the conversation and see what the public input can be and to evaluate these other options. You know, I think we do have valuable resources here, natural resources. I think downtown hotels don't have a beach and that we can, you know, advertise our beaches and come over here to our beaches and spend the day in Winthrop. It's certainly, you know, we talked about our public-private partnership with transportation vehicle, not just for the ferry, but for Beach Day, where police officers are giving out tickets because everyone's packed all over the place instead of saying, hey, go to Veterans Road, here's a beach buggy, they'll pick you up and bring you to the beach, and you won't get a $40 ticket. I think it's a win-win for public safety, it's a win-win for the town. But we can use the same service to help with the ferry as well.
Councilor, sir.
Firstly, I wanted to recognize the hard work that Terry and Ron have been doing to try and make the ferry work. I also think that we live in a boating community and everybody who owns a boat knows that a boat is a money pit. And I think we really owe it to the public to discuss what the future is of the ferry. I saw that we posted some of the part-time jobs for it, and the first thing that came to mind is, I don't know what we're waiting for here. If we're looking for a regional system to tack onto that we can hop onto, I think we can hop onto that whenever it shows up. But right now, we're just throwing money into the water while we've got one functioning DPW truck and we need a fire station. And to me, I can't see Winthrop operating a ferry after having the report that we have on it. Whereas if we can hook onto something else, it would give us that same kind of service, go to wind, go to whatever, and have it not on our dime, I think that's definitely the best way to go, and I think we should talk about that, put it on the agenda for the next time.
Anybody else?
I agree that this is a really important discussion that we need to have. How are we going to move forward? Are we going to move forward? But I agree, we need to have it on a properly noticed agenda. This is a topic of great community interest and the community needs to be aware.
I agree. Anyone else? Thank you.
So continuing right along, Morton Street residents are requesting a community meeting on the flooding conditions that took place down there. Councilor Terry is working with my office on putting that together and also we're working on the MVP grant to actually have public hearings on the overall vulnerability of the harbor to the town. So part of our vulnerability study that is posted online is a follow-up, public discussions about what the findings were of that report. And then, of course, we're trying to tie this into the Environmental One Bill that we can ask our legislative agents to advocate whatever we need to keep us from being vulnerable. So we're trying to get everything tied in sweetly together by the end of February here. So Millers Field is just, you know, we discussed that last time, and I'm going to make the assumption it's going to go back to the schools when it's done. That means Superintendent Gill will certainly put a good plan together.
She is.
And but the council should, I think, make notice through the council president or through the school committee that we want public hours and what those public hours should look like for that facility, if that's the will of the council. I'm certainly in favor of the public hours, and I think everyone should be able to utilize it at least to some portion of the day, but it needs to be secured at night, that's for sure. The Toss the Boss is a new event that my deputy chief has named me for on March 3rd for a fundraiser for Special Olympics. Larissa from my office will be putting out to all employees and as well as to the public that they can sponsor me, and I will take the plunge on Revere Beach on March 3rd for the Special Olympics. All proceeds will go to the Special Olympics, the state police. Headed up the conversation today with the Revere Police and the Winthrop Police, getting everyone on board and all the funds. Special Olympics Committee was there as well. So it's a good event. It's a positive event. I'm hoping for some sunshine between now and then to warm that water up, but I doubt it's going to happen, right? Mia Moray, I think everyone's gotten their annual report. They've done a tremendous job here in Winthrop, and, you know, we get a lot of good partners here from the Winthrop Market, the Winthrop Public Schools, the Winthrop Food Pantry last year, the House of Pizza, Harrington House, St. John's, and Aviadas that contribute and recycle foods, that go out to families that need food, they show them how to store it and how long it's good for. It's a great program. This Thursday, I'm excited to connect Mia Moray with Barbara Pucci from Capic to see if there's more clients that we can serve here in Winthrop. So if anyone has anyone that needs services, they can contact Mia Moray directly or through my office, and we'll get them the services they need and what we can provide for them. So it was a great thing. And I think the Center Business zoning analysis is complete. The total pages is about 600 pages. The first 18 is the bulk of the report. Everything we relied on and quote "in the report" is an addendum, so anyone can independently fact-check me. Certainly, we've had a lot of discussion based on that. And first, I want to say and correct myself from the public meeting where we said we could set back next to a residential A. That was, I relied on that from my conversations with my inspection team and also a memo that was put out some time ago, I think last May, from the former town manager, that allowed the setback. There is no finding in our ordinance, and footnote 14 makes it clear that right next to, or excuse me, adjacent to residential A District, it's two and a half stories, 35 feet without relief. And I just want to, you know, stress that they have to go through the relief process that they want to go higher than the two and a half stories, 35 feet. Some people have bought properties based on that analysis that was presented and issued. That's unfortunate. I can't correct certain things that happened in the past. I can only move forward. And, you know, certainly I'm committed to moving forward. I'm committed to moving those properties forward. No one likes to see a vacant building. And certainly, we don't want it to become a problem property for the taxpayer or for law enforcement or for the fight upon. So I think our commitment is that our findings, certainly the master plan in 2017 is a visionary plan that has no binding on the zoning laws of the town of Winthrop. So anything that was in the 2017 master plan process and that was adopted and voted the council is not a zoning law. The zoning laws have been specifically adopted and they're contained in 1750 of the Center Business District zoning laws. And a lot of the zoning laws that were adopted were carried into the chapter from prior years. The Center Business District itself was adopted in 1987. Before, it was the village or the business district in the center. And so what 87 did is adopt everything that was the business district to Center Business District. So you have to go backwards to find that. In 1922, we saw references to the three family homes between the credit union and Swet's Liquors that were adopted into the business district. So those three failing homes are certainly part of the Center Business District as amended in the 1987. The maps that we found is the 87 map that was voted. The 2006 map was never voted. The only thing in the zoning laws in 2006 that was adopted by council was the SDOD. So that is no map to the SDOD is an overlay for the entire town. So there's a 2006 map that everyone's relying on that has never been officially adopted by the town. So that's unfortunate as well, and we're trying to correct that at the Building Department. But really, I think moving forward needs to happen is we need to bring in someone to actually do these overlays accurately and concretely so we know what zones in the entire town that people can do what in. And, you know, certainly, my findings were that there's no single or two family homes on Cottage Park, Somerset, Bartlett, or Woodside adjacent to a commercial district that's included in the Center Business District. You know, we've had some discussion today with one of the developers in the center and, you know, they oppose my view, I mean, quite honestly, and they can oppose my view. And we're going to have a discussion about it and talk about it. But I would urge everyone not to waste a lot of time arguing. Let's talk about solutions and what the neighborhood can tolerate and what the developer can tolerate on a price point. And I think I've been very vocal about not every, I believe not every apartment complex down there, condo complex, whatever you want to call them, needs a commercial space on the first floor. We have starving businesses in the center now. Why create more competition? We need to funnel more people into them to make them survive and make everyone survive. Parking is a very important issue to the people on Cottage Park and Somerset and Bartlett. I understand that. But I think what we need to do is, my report is issued, my findings are my findings. I have submitted them to the inspectional service team. Al Agui has to make a finding to adopt my findings or make his own findings as to where those lines are and what's included in the Center Business District. That's under our zoning code. Any dispute goes to our assesses map, or our assesses map doesn't have any overlays, then the building commissioner decides. So to the people, first of all, it's my mistake and I should have fact-checked myself better on that setback, and I didn't. But, you know, that is the law. And Copeland Page has reviewed that specific section of the law. You won't find those findings in my report because I never addressed that issue. I answered the question based at the community meeting, and I wanted to correct myself tonight. And the person who asked that question, I emailed today, and I think the council was CC'd on that email as well. So he's well aware of my error. We have set the record straight, and now we need to move forward. And, you know, I will certainly engage the community down there through the council with our planner and also engage developers to see, you know, what can we agree on? I think my vision is, let's get everyone to agree on whatever it is and then go to the planning board instead of, you know, creating a process that's going to be delayed. Let's meet, let's agree, let's get everyone on the same page, and let's move forward. So they're going to, you know, they're going to be looking for relief and we got to make that work. And, you know, what type of relief can the neighborhood tolerate is the question, and we will work with the neighborhood on that. That's my commitment to them and certainly my commitment to developers. And as you said, Mr. Vecchio, that if we don't have new growth, you know, we're looking at overrides just to maintain services, and we don't want to do that. I don't want to be the one that comes to council and says we need an override, for sure, unless we have exhausted every other option. So that is posted online as well under the presentations and projects. Anyone can read it. There's a hard copy in the town manager's office. We'll make another hard copy and put it in the library and also in the clerk's office. So there's at least hard copies floating around. And certainly, anyone, it's public record, anyone can request it. It might be cheaper to print it on your own printer than to come to the town hall and requesting us to print it and stuff like that. So we're trying to make it as transparent, and if anyone has a problem with it, I'm willing to sit down with anyone to talk about that report. But again, Joe and Ashlyn, Denise and Calla, Steve Roach in the assesses office, and the Building Department, in accordance with Mr. Dimes and also Mr. Hubbard, information was gathered by all sources, not just by me, and I appreciate all the help. The TIPS project that was mentioned earlier by Julia, there's an engineering cost, all these projects that we put in for, there's an engineering cost to it. There's certainly an engineering cost to that TIP project. And certainly, I've become the council to see if they want to move forward on that TIP project, you know, 100% engineering on that is $373,000 that we have to pay, and we have to have it engineered for mass DOT. And the project price, we don't have to pay, these DOT will then come in and do the project for us. But if we want to do 75% engineering and worry about the rest in the future year, it's about $242,000. But those are the decisions that when we have these projects that are complete streets, whether or not we can fund that this year or not is a bigger question when we have money that we need to put into DBW, and we certainly have other playground issues that we still have to figure out and make our playgrounds safe. So these are the big decisions that we have to make, and whether or not we want to move forward with that TIP project will be one of them, and I'll prepare a motion and a brief summary for the next council meeting.
I want to know what it entails, what have we gained? What does the project consist of before, you know, we even consider?
And I, yeah, I don't want to present it tonight because I want to be able to put it on the agenda and actually give a write-up to it so everyone understands it and you know what you're getting out of, you know, out of it. Before this was an extended project that we actually went from here all the way down to Crest Ave. Jimmy Kettis split the project and did most of this end of it on the town's general fund side, and now we have the other side that needs to be done on complete streets. So we'll give a nice description of that and for the next council meeting, what it's going to cost to get this engineered as well, what 75% and 100%, and the council can decide whether they want to move that project forward. That will conclude my report for today.
Okay. The next item, question?
Yeah, can I just, so in regards to your new understanding, I guess it might not be new, but your understanding of the guidelines now, there was already a pre-submitting application put in that was four stories on Somerset Ave. What is the, so is that going to have to be revised now that we have a different understanding of what?
I think his relief would have to be revised. So, you know, by right, they can go up two and a half stories, 35 feet. They can get relief to go up higher.
Okay.
But that relief has to come from the planning board. All relief in the Center Business District goes to the planning board and not the Board of Appeals. That was one of the changes that was made to streamline the process and to have one board in control of the one board in control of the actual design and the layout and everything else.
Just a question about the center infrastructure project. I know it's a continuous moving target.
Yeah.
And it's a tough question, is when can we anticipate shovels in the street at this point?
If everything goes right, my D P W director has informed me that we're looking at after July fourth weekend starting. And that's the best estimate we can give you until we get the bids back.
Yeah, I know it's a moving target, we don't have all the information yet, but just want to try and keep the progress up to date as we are.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Next item is the school department update.
I just had one thing that my director has brought, mentioned earlier, and I neglected it. The gas station repairs to the D P W pumps has certainly been a larger project than anticipated. Our plan was to use the reserve in the fuel accounts to cover the costs, and that's not going to be an option. So just expect a motion coming forward for the difference in those repairs. The tank actually got impaled during the process that needed to be patched, and the company, the only company that could actually certify the patch is the company that installed the tank. They're coming out from Texas. And I think the earliest time we could get him here was next week, Steve?
February twentieth.
February twentieth is the earliest time we can get him. So we're using commercial gas pumps at this time until D P W comes online.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? No. Next item on the agenda is the school department update, which I will give. This is from the January twenty-second meeting of the Winthrop School Committee. At the beginning of the meeting, we had an update from the senior and junior class presidents, Michaela Norris and Ava Bertino. They gave a kind of an overview of exactly what's happening in the school, where the prom's going to be, and all the good stuff, and some of the fundraisers they've been doing. The health department made their presentation, the same presentation we had here at our last meeting, on changes in some of the town bylaws as it relates to the age that you could purchase cigarettes and other things. The budget process is proceeding. I know they've made several subcommittee meetings already on the budget. The superintendent is in the process, if not complete, in drafting the millifire maintenance plan. So we'll be interested to see that. And finally, the Wi-Fi upgrade that we, it was to the two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars. That should be complete during the February school vacation.
And there was some issue with that project today that I got a quick briefing on before this meeting, and electrical, some electrical needs are necessary. You know, we're waiting for quotes in the morning, but in order to make that happen, we're going to have to find a funding source for the electrician that would exceed that three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
By how much, I don't know yet, but tomorrow morning I'll have that.
Okay. On the old business, the town council to transfer seventy-five thousand from the capital stabilization fund to the general fund for the D P W plow truck. That's a motion that comes out of finance, does not need a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is town council transfer of six thousand dollars from the town council reserve fund to the sanitation of the council on aging building. Again, that's a motion out of finance, does not need a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the old business, the Winthrop Middle School site rezoning. This is a very exciting subject.
Council president, will we back up for a moment? I think we need a roll call vote on those two.
On the seventy-five, I'm sorry, you're correct. So we're taking a roll call on the seventy-five thousand from capital stabilization fund to the general fund for the D P W check.
Council Inman?
Yes.
Council Calla?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Terry?
Yes.
Council McDuffie?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
President Boncory?
President Vecchio?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Appreciate that. Okay. The Winthrop Middle School site rezoning recommendation, we received a recommendation of sorts in a letter form from the Winthrop Planning Board. Do you want to discuss that? I know we have to refer that to the Economic Development Committee. Any discussion on it at this point?
I would just urge the council and the subcommittees to keep in mind, what's the most advantageous zoning for the town of Winthrop? And put blinders on to what people say might go there and might not go there, but what fits and is most flexible for the town economically, as well as service providing, in a service providing way. K and P had issued a opinion to the planning board. I will forward that to the entire council. I'm not sure if I had, if I did that already or not, but certainly, they went through the analysis, and what zoning is the most flexible for the town to grow. And I would just like to urge the council to think in those terms, and I know there's a lot of opinions out there, we want this or we want that, and, you know, at this point, we don't know what if anyone will even bid on us. But if we don't zone it to be most flexible, we can never put an R F P L, because no one's going to respond to it. We already tried that, no one did respond to it, because it wasn't zoned. So that's my ask and my request in moving this to the right committee.
Okay, so that's being referred to the Economic Development Committee.
Just a point of clarification to the Economic Development Subcommittee of the council?
Yes, absolutely. The town manager search. Right now, we have seventeen applications that the committee will be reviewing on the seventh. Is that correct?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night. And out of that will come an elimination of sorts, and recommendations to interview certain individuals. But right now, we do have seventeen applications. We're actually waiting for one more, but it doesn't seem to come. I have to say that. The council clerk position for full-time, and I think there was a recommendation?
Yes, came out of committee with a favorable recommendation.
Okay. Any discussion by the full council? Are we ready to make a recommendation to vote, to adopt that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Do you want to make any comment?
Well, I think it's, again, a great way for us to help with some of the transparency and getting all of our information up on the web and organized. I think we do need another meeting with the subcommittee on finance to talk about the role and defining it a little bit more with the personnel that are involved. So we probably should schedule another meeting. The town manager and...
And I would just ask that, obviously, the council clerk is an appointment of the council. So any agreement as a result of the job duties would have to be negotiated through the council. So I don't know if you want to appoint a subcommittee to do that, review it, review Denise's new role as a full-time clerk of the council, or you want to have a joint committee, your discretion. Certainly, H R director can help and assist, and the council and anything that they need, but it's your appointment, so therefore, the agreement has to be with the council, not with the town manager's office.
Okay. There was a discussion relative to what's going to happen in the clerk's office in terms of the position she's leading there. Is that another open position at the clerk's office?
That would be not unless the council chooses to fund another open position. So that's the financing issue that I think Mr. Lucero has alluded to, and that still has to be worked out, that leaves that office with the clerk, assistant clerk, and a union clerk, for lack of a better word. So there's not three union clerks there, but there's Carla Vitale, her assistant, Joanne Damato, and then a clerk. And so, you know, certainly, there's no funding mechanism. Denise went in there, she does both jobs while she's in there, but we really needed to streamline some of the processes, and I think it's better off having her down close to the council chambers, where you have access to her in your chambers as well. So there's those issues that we still need to work out, but we can do it in a subcommittee, executive session type of negotiations, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, I think we basically now want to establish the position as a lot more details, contract negotiation, et cetera, that we need to discuss.
Any further discussion or comments? On the new business, Horizon as a petition that we will put on for a public hearing on the twentieth. Town council appropriates four million three, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred for the purposes of financing the construction of the town center. That's going to be referred to finance, that also will be a public hearing. Town council vote to accept and authorize a recommended ordinance change referred to, referred from T S A C. That's going to be referred to rules and ordinances. And the discussion of diversity, inclusion, and accessibility committee, and that's going to be referred to committee committees, but I'll let you speak on it if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you. Much appreciated. So a number of people have come to us, and you've heard the public comment from one Winthrop group and a number of other concerned citizens, particularly what's going on in our national politics, and also in the surrounding areas. A lot of our neighboring communities have established human rights commissions in the nineteen nineties, actually, and even earlier. And those include Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, Chelsea, Lynn, Melrose, Wakefield, Salem, Belmont, Arlington, Brookline, and the list keeps going on and on. But we have never addressed this issue in a sort of formal way. So the idea, you know, every community is measured against those that, you know, you think don't necessarily have a voice, give those people a voice. And I think that this committee of diversity, inclusion, and accessibility is in recognition of these issues as being sort of a hot button issue, and we need to create a safe space for people to talk about these different issues in our community and beyond. So very happy that it's on the agenda, and I hope that we can make this happen for those concerned citizens that would like to see this committee formed.
Any other comment? Okay. Last item on the new business is appointments, and I would ask the council if they want to take them individually, or can we take it as one with these appointments that we're going to make this evening? Have you had a chance to review them? Can we take it as one motion?
I move that we take it as one motion.
Is that second? Okay. That the town council accept the appointments made by the town council president to the following committees, or take any other action there too. Beautification committee, Maxine Lieberman, Kimberly Casey. Board of Appeals, Jason Wright as an associate. Board of License, Mark Shingplain. Finance Commission, Brent Farrell. Council on Aging, Heather Martin. Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee, Susan DiVelleese. Harbor Management, Don Armistead. Parks Committee, Patricia Singarello. Scholarship Committee, Karen Chavez. Transportation Committee, Benjamin Shaq. I hope I got that right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. And we are now at public comment. Yes?
Steve Heinz, precinct six, sales manager at Robyn Paul Properties, we're opening an office in Winthrop Center in a few weeks. We're also, our dear friends at H Y M Investments are putting ten thousand units of housing at the subject down site, eleven million square feet of commercial space, and it's also in the running for Amazon's second North American headquarters. It's right on our doorstep. We have yet to have a seat at the table in any of those discussions. So on the fifteenth, Robyn Paul Properties and the Chamber of Commerce have teamed up to invite them to the Cottage Park Yacht Club from six P M. to eight P M. They'll be giving a presentation to chamber members and anyone else who'd like to attend. I'll be purchasing the food, and there'll be cash bar open on that night. It's going to be a really fantastic presentation. They have a lot of traffic mitigation things that they've done, and I think that it would be really good for our community to force a seat at the table if we're not going to be handed one.
Steve, could you repeat that date?
Thursday, February fifteenth, from six P M. to eight P M. at the Cottage Park Yacht Club. Everybody's welcome.
Anyone else? Guess we've stopped.
Jack, excuse me. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I left out a few things in my first discussion, but I do want to acknowledge the neighbors at the center to bring the issue of two and a half stories to the forefront. I was at the meeting, precinct five, and there were at least a couple of people that brought us to the forefront, and I appreciate the manager looking into it and correcting that issue. The other thing I wanted to talk about, I left out, was in two thousand and five, there was a fifty-five page report done by McGregor and Associates, and the report is called "The Town of Winthrop Open Space and Recreation Plan." It was an extensive report about the need to keep historic park land and open space for the use of everybody in the town. The other thing that I want to mention that I feel mentioned earlier was that in Article ninety-seven disposition of land, one of the most important aspects of that law is that if you don't go by the guidelines of Article ninety-seven, ninety-seven disposition of land, you could jeopardize grant money in the future. That's why the law was written. The law was written to protect open space, park land, historic land, et cetera. It's very extensive. I hope you all read it, and I hope you all discuss it at an upcoming meeting, either the town council or the finance meeting that this land is going to be discussed at. I hope that McGregor report is read by everybody on the council and used. It was an extensive report, and to go from two thousand and five to two thousand and fifteen, to go in opposite directions, is a drastic change. I think the land at Pauline Street will drastically change. I hope you consider especially Article ninety-seven and the McGregor report, and use this material to make a decision about the use of that land. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any further comment?
Sean Robson, precinct one, just want to welcome all the new council members, and of course, I think tentative town manager, Terry Delianti, he's doing a great job as well. I'd just like to bring to your attention again the Morton Street area. We were devastated by that storm. I think it's gone a little underappreciated. People don't necessarily come down to that part of town, and they don't necessarily see the families that are displaced down there. I urge that the council members just to take note of that, and I appreciate any help you can get.
Thank you. Any further comment? Okay. Public relations, we do have one item that I was given today. It's on a forum that's being held by CASA at the Winthrop High Middle School on March eighth, from six to seven thirty, on vaping and e-cigarettes. It's a community forum, something that's very important, especially now with the Board of Health considering changing regulations. The vaping situation is a serious problem within the schools, and I think if you don't know too much about it, it might be a good opportunity to get educated on it. Anyone else? Yes?
Sure, I just wanted to let everybody know that I am having a cleanup of the center on this weekend at eleven o'clock on Saturday. We're going to meet at, I don't know if I should, we're going to meet at my mom's flower shop.
Have you got a plug?
Right on Woodside Ave. But I also just wanted to quickly thank Speaker DeLeo and the Friends of Winthrop Beach. They're going to provide the cleaning materials, but I hope to see anyone who can be there come. I think it should be a good way to sort of screw self the center. So, thank you.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.